Twenty first, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Economic Development Corporation. May we have the roll call, please, for the council?
Council members divine, here. Friedman, here. Garpetian?
Here.
Sinanian? Mayor Nagerian?
Here. And for the Economic Development Corporation, please.
Board members divine, here. Friedman?
Here.
Garpetian?
Here.
Sinanian? Chair Nagerian?
Here. Will you please read your report?
The agenda for the July twenty first, two thousand and fifteen, joint public meeting of the City Council and Economic Development Corporation was posted on Friday, July seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The agenda was also intended to be posted at the Washington Court Hotels Business Center. However, due to a posting error at the Washington Court Hotel, the agenda was not posted at the hotel and therefore Councilmember Sinanian will be unable to participate in this meeting.
Thank you. Will you read the first item?
Item one, Director of Economic Development regarding lease management agreement between the City of Glendale and the Glendale Economic Development Corporation, GEDC, and the Glendale Arts to manage and operate the Alex Theater located at two sixteen North Brand Boulevard. Item one A, introduction of ordinance approving lease agreement with Glendale Arts for Alex Theater. And item one B, GEDC motion approving management agreement with Glendale Arts for Alex Theater.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll go to Phil Landsafame, Director of Economic Development.
Mr. Mayor and Chair and members of the council and Economic Development Corporation. This is an event that we've been looking forward to since nineteen ninety-two, when the redevelopment agency purchased the Alex Theater. The redevelopment agency would have expired in the downtown project area in August of two thousand and fifteen, this year. And so we had expected that there would come a time when the city would take control of the theater and we would be looking to renew our agreements with an entity, most likely Glendale Arts, to continue the operation of the Alex Theater. With dissolution of redevelopment, that came in a little bit different route than we had anticipated, but nonetheless, here we are. So the agreements that you have before you are, again, a lease agreement, a ground lease with Glendale Arts. This is, they have been leasing the property since two thousand and eight. It's coupled with a management agreement, having Glendale Arts manage the city's asset for us. To give you a little, and to then put these in a little bit of context, it was nineteen ninety-two and the redevelopment agency bought the theater and rehabilitated it. The idea being that it would be a regional performing arts center, not necessarily a movie house, not necessarily vaudeville, or dramatic arts, or musical arts, or conference center, but all of those things to the community. And so it really has become a community asset with a wide range of programming, serving a wide range of our community. The theater attracts over a hundred thousand people per year in the fourteen, approximately fourteen hundred seat theater. Glendale Arts has, over the years, developed a very unique skill set at juggling these different venues, not venues, but performance mediums and meetings and things, and to run the theater as a community asset. The Alex Theater is also a very big economic driver, and with the help of social media, we're now able to start to quantify that. The Americans for the Arts have concluded in a study specific to Glendale, that patrons spend twelve dollars and fifty cents, fifty-three cents, for every ticket purchased. Multiply that by a hundred thousand patrons and we have economic activity, direct economic activity, of one point two million dollars. Add whatever multiplier you want, that's the number of times that dollar is spent in our local economy, and you can see that the Alex Theater is quite important, and it's quite an important economic engine. The last kind of contextual thing that I wanted to talk about is funding for the arts. About forty-five percent of funding for all arts comes from public and private contributions. The balance comes from revenue generated. We took a look at some of our neighboring comparable venues and found that somewhere between twenty, I'm sorry, thirty to sixty percent of their total budget is funded by the public entity. In Glendale, at the Alex Theater with Glendale Arts, we've got that number to about twenty-three percent. Now, the only place that is lower, ten to twenty percent, La Mirada, their public contribution is five million dollars. What we have provided to the Alex Theater is four hundred and fifteen thousand. So it gives you a bit of an idea that the Alex Theater, while it has needed some help in terms of a management fee and subsidy, is very efficient in terms of comparability with other public art venues. The lease terms and management terms are very similar to what we've experienced before. On the lease side, a five-year lease with a five-year option. We have, we've got some cleanup to do. The option is on the tenant to announce that they would like to exercise that five-year option. Really what that does is calls for us then to negotiate those terms for the next five years. The lease rate is nominal dollar annually. The landlord responsibilities on a standard lease, typical of the standard lease, we're responsible for building systems, the structural integrity. The tenant, Glendale Arts in this case, would be responsible for everything else. In terms of personal property, anything that Glendale Arts purchases of their own, once the lease is concluded, they will be able to take with them. In terms of naming rights, we have this ability for them to sell naming rights in the theater. However, we have prohibited that on the exterior of the theater, so inside, inside the marquee area and the building, they can use that for funding campaigns, capital campaigns and whatnot. With respect to the management agreement, we would, again, run it concurrently with the lease as it does now. So a five-year management agreement, we would have to negotiate terms if they exercise the option. In years one and two, we're proposing a management fee of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We're using this number to kind of make up for the two or three years that we lost with dissolution. The idea behind the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts was that we would, the city redevelopment agency, would put the theater in a position that would allow them to attract a broader range of programming and help them generate more funds for self, towards self-sufficiency. That was really interrupted by dissolution. We were unable to deliver that two and three years in advance of this sunset. So we're proposing that the first two years be a similar amount as now, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Those funds could be used, again, as they are today, any way that Glendale Arts chooses to in their operation. In years three and four, that number drops to two hundred thousand dollars, and then in year five, to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, with the idea that Glendale Arts will be in a better position to operate the theater with little or no subsidy. In years three, four, and five, we would ask Glendale Arts to limit or restrict that, the use of that management fee for things like capital improvements, utilities, or things that improve our asset or benefit something to the city. That really is at the city's choose. We can dictate how that works, the way that it's drafted in the agreement now. But we would recommend something like that, where the money goes back into the building or it goes to use to benefit something in Glendale. Days of activity currently, the theater is used about two hundred days. We've set a target for two hundred and twenty-five, increasing to two hundred and forty-five days by the end of the initial term. Similar to agreements that we have in place now, we're asking Glendale Arts to keep reserves, a general reserve of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as a target, and much like you all have with your city reserve, to put a floor of seventy-five thousand dollars. If for some reason the reserve is needed to go, the reserve funds are needed for something and it goes below seventy-five thousand dollars, that would require a vote of the committee, the Alex Theater Committee. Currently, that has a majority of city representatives on it. So in effect, they can't go below seventy-five thousand unless the city says okay. Now, at the end of the year, if they're not at the target, the management fee would go to replenish that reserve before they use for anything else. Similar, again, to our agreements now, Glendale Arts would continue to report to the City Council on a quarterly basis. They would do an annual audit. The city will have, city representatives will have input on who the audit committee is, and that's subject to city approval, who the auditor is. And finally, public use of the theater. Currently, the city retains four days of use of the theater, assuming that there's nobody else on the calendar, that's for the full theater auditorium, and then six days where we can use it for receptions, the lobby, the terrace, or the forecourt. So we would still have the use of those days in the current agreements. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we do have some ground, some housekeeping. There are the changes that we have to make, these are drafts, they're non-substantive, with the exception of one. The management agreement in your packet is drafted between Glendale Arts and the City of Glendale. We're proposing that that be the Glendale Economic Development Corporation to match the funding source for the management fee. So we're asking you to approve it with that change. We will make those changes before the ordinance goes into effect for the city on the ground lease portion. Some other examples include some cleanup on the option. It is the tenants' option to renew for that additional five-year period, but there will be, there are terms that the city must approve or will need to approve before that becomes effective. Mutual noticing requirements and things, consistency of defined terms between the two agreements. So we will clean all those up. In addition, we will have, back before you shortly, maybe as soon as next week, a cooperation agreement between the city and the Economic Development Corporation, just memorializing the ability for the corporation to do economic development and to manage assets for the city. That is implied in your formation of the corporation, but want to memorialize that. So that agreement will be back before you, again, before this ordinance is effective. With that completes my presentation. Staff is here, much of staff that worked on this, as well as board members from Glendale Arts and much of their staff, including their executive director. Do you have any questions?
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a question for Elisa Lookman, for the Executive Director of Glendale Arts.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi there.
Welcome, and thanks to the board members for coming as well. I've got a bunch of your board here. My question is just, after listening to all of the conditions and all of the stipulations, are you okay with this? Is this something that you can operate within? Do you feel that it's realistic, the reserves, all of that? I want to make sure that this is something that works for you and your organization as well.
Yeah, we're leaving. No, actually, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, Mr. Landsafame and I and along with his staff and the city attorney's office have worked for months and months and months nailing down a lot of these details and going back and forth on a few of them. As Mr. Landsafame noted, there are still a few small details that need to be hammered out, but our board and our staff are committed to all of the tenants of both of the agreements that are being signed. In terms of the reserve that Mr. Landsafame pointed out, we've already met the minimum, so it's just getting to the target. And with some of the fundraising goals that we've set out in the projected budget that you will see, including naming opportunities, seat naming, our ninetieth birthday campaign, all of those things, we believe that we can not only hit those targets, but we can actually grow those investment accounts. We've just moved all of our reserve funds, with the exception of our facility money, which is still in restricted dollar amounts from a cash flow standpoint, but we've moved that seventy-five thousand reserve to be housed with the Stone Beck Group, and they're currently investing that. So we also anticipate a six percent growth year over year. So we've really tried to build an infrastructure so that we can meet those tenants of those agreements, and as I said, we are, my board is committed to ensuring that we can fulfill all of those obligations by two thousand and twenty.
Great. We're not getting six percent on our city reserve investments, so...
I know, let's keep our fingers crossed.
Keep your fingers crossed, well, okay, that's great. I just want to be sure that, you know, none of this interferes with your ability to operate the Alex to its fullest use as a community arts center. You know, that's, it's great to be self-sufficient, it's great to generate income, you certainly need to do that, and I know that's your goal. And that's my goal as well, but it's also my goal to be sure that you are the best performing arts center that you can be for the people of Glendale. So if you ever have any problems with that, I hope that you won't hesitate to come back and we can certainly talk about it.
Well, I certainly know where to find all of you, and I certainly know where to track down Mr. Landsafame. But again, I believe that, given our vast experience, first as the Alex Regional Theater Board, and then later as Glendale Arts, and currently as Glendale Arts, we are in a unique position to not only continue to improve our programming and encourage more of our repeat clients to come back, but also encourage new programming as we've done over the last two years. So I only see outstanding things that lay ahead between us and our goals getting to two thousand and twenty.
Great.
Thank you so much for your support. Any other questions for me?
Well, I was just going to say that, and Elisa, you kind of mentioned the fact that you have a board, and you as Executive Director are working so hard to maintain the viability of the Alex Theater. And I know that you have the anniversary coming up, and I think that's going to generate funds for you. I think you're thinking out of the box, you're being creative with your fundraising efforts. So I don't think we have any, any reason to doubt that the Alex Theater will be here for, for many years. I think this is a fair agreement. I'm happy that you're happy with it. And again, we're all here to support the Alex Theater.
You so much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, I think what's so encouraging to me is you started this five years ago, and every business that I know was going down. And you started this five years ago, you've done a great job with the remodeling going on for the last two, three years. Now you have all the ammunitions that you need, and this is one of them that, I had a question in the, you know, before as to why do they need a lease? Because they're managing it for us, but I understand the issue that if you want to go out and raise money, if you don't have a lease, it's very difficult. So you have all the ammunitions today to even do a better job, and I want to congratulate you and the board, and looking forward to working with all of you, you know, for a better future for Alex.
Thank you so much. We now have everything in our tool chest that we need in order to succeed, and we appreciate and acknowledge the fact that this council and this staff was so, had so much forethought and had so much respect for the venue and the benefits that it brings to the community that even during the difficult times, especially during the difficult times, that each of you supported it in your own way. So that means so much to our board, and that's very encouraging to the staff as we move forward in order to meet the tenants of this agreement. So thank you.
Now, your first project is the lights, right?
Yes, so keep, yes, I have made a promise. So just remember, September fourth, which is our ninetieth birthday, which we'll be having a big celebration, that will be a day of celebration for you especially, because that neon will be relit on that day.
Very good.
It'll look magnificent.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question. I think first for staff, you might be able to help. With regard to naming rights, do we know how much money is possible through naming rights? I mean, I think we need to know how much, let's say, a Disney balcony could be, or the Nestle stage, or the Whole Foods orchestra pit. I mean, if we're talking big money, I think we should know what we're talking about. If we're talking just modest sum, I don't have a problem.
I don't believe in modest sums. We actually do have a list that we've generated in terms of naming opportunities in the venue. We've attached preliminary numbers to that list and are currently vetting that with other professionals that have done large campaigns and can either validate that our numbers are inside the bucket or validate, or let us know if we're completely off the mark. So we're in that fact-finding stage now, this was sort of the first step to get past that.
I think we should know what they are, what those kind of numbers are, and I have no idea what they are. Because we're, everything else in the contract is fairly certain.
Sure.
If, you know, if you're able to pull in, let's say, you think big, five hundred thousand in naming rights, that's something that...
That's small. We're looking at actually a couple million dollars altogether. And again, the bulk of that will be reinvested into our reserve accounts in order to create longevity. It's also numbers, just so you know, that once they're established by staff, they will first be vetted by the Alex Theater Committee as well as our finance committee. Both, the Alex Theater Committee has city staff that are voting members, finance has a city staff representative, and then it'll go to the board. In that process, if that's something that you all feel you want us to bring back to, we can work with city staff in order to ensure that you all have a peek at what our intentions are.
I mean, when you say a couple million, are you serious?
Yeah, I'm serious. I mean, we have identified doorways and, I mean, you'll laugh, but we've also looked at bathrooms. So we've really looked at every opportunity, with the exception of the marquee, that could potentially be a naming opportunity within the venue. And there are precedents out there, we've looked at other venues, both historic as well as new, performing arts centers, museums, some of our other competitors, what naming opportunities they explored and exploited, and we really feel like these are realistic opportunities for us. And as I said, we will bring this list back to the Alex Theater Committee for a looksee and to look at the numbers on the long term.
Mr. Landsafame?
Mr. Mayor, it should be noted that revenue that's generated as a result of management of the Alex Theater goes back into the theater. If we were dealing with a private entity, and I'm not sure this is your concern, I might have the same concern, why are we allowing the venue to be leased for a nominal amount and then there's a windfall to be had? In this situation, it goes to a reserve that then gets put back into the theater. Glendale Arts exists somewhat to manage the theater, and that's where I think there's, from my perspective, I'd like to see as much generated, because we have put the burden of maintenance and all capital on Glendale Arts. So I would like to see as much generated so that we know that Glendale Arts has the resources to do that capital maintenance over a period of decades.
And I think as a follow-up to what Mr. Landsafame is saying, if you look at, I believe it's the last page of your staff report, there is a very aggressive list of CIP projects that Glendale Arts has identified over the next ten years, so it actually goes beyond our current agreement. The funds that are raised through the bulk of these naming opportunities will be used to address a lot of those capital improvement projects. So it's a combination of both our facility fee, which is our restoration and programming fee, which you also have a copy of in your packet, as well as these, these naming opportunities that will continue to fund these projects, which were traditionally funded by the redevelopment agency. So in lieu of the redevelopment agency finding those and investing in those capital improvement projects, like seat recovering and painting of the interior, even the exterior of the building, and some of the other improvements, those are the types of things that we propose to use our reserve accounts to fund.
Are our attorneys okay with this? I mean, I mean...
Mr. Mayor, members of the...
We're talking millions of dollars in naming rights, and we're, you know, putting in...
Let us step back a little bit.
Tell me what you think about that.
Sure. I think Elisa and Phil have already sort of given you a context or framework for our consideration of the funds that might be generated through the naming rights, but a couple of things to consider that Elisa mentioned is that we are, have been paying a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar management fee over quite a period of time, and this management agreement is scheduled to reduce that down ultimately to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if it is renewed. And there are revenues coming in that could support the elimination of it, that's something that we could consider within the renewal period. But this is a transition and a stabilization period, as Phil had indicated, we did lose some years because of the dissolution delay with completing the CIP projects that the agency was obligated to complete under the old lease agreement. So a portion of the potential revenue from the naming rights will help to reduce or eliminate the management fee on a going-forward basis. And then also, as Elisa indicated, they are obligated, under this lease agreement, to take full responsibility for tenant CIP. And that, as we know, could be potentially very, very costly. So they're obligated to have those revenues set aside for the restoration and programming and the maintenance obligations. Now, we do have oversight of that, as is, the committee has a vote, and anything over a five thousand dollar expenditure requires the approval of that committee that has city membership. If there is an issue with a capital expenditure or programming, restoration expenditure, those are the sorts of things that we would recommend to come back for further discussion. But the objective here is to use that revenue and channel it back into, and it's legally required to be channeled back into, investment in the theater. We know how much that's cost over time in order to keep the theater current, and with changing technologies, we anticipate those investments will continue to be necessary. But certainly within that five-year period, it's reasonable to, we think it's a reasonable period of time where we will be able to revisit this on the renewal option and then make a decision at that point concerning the continuation of the management fee, rejiggering the amount of investment in order to maintain and improve the theater and implement technologies and things of that nature. So we think, based on the practical concerns, that it is reasonable at this point in time to allow them the time to vet out the possibility of obtaining revenue from naming rights, it is channeled back into the theater under these agreements, and that'll put us in a position, once we know how much it is, to, within, you know, at the end of the five years, to make adjustments if those are necessary. So that's our take on it.
Do the naming rights have a, have a sunset on them? Or is this in perpetuity?
That's yet to be negotiated.
Yeah, they'll be, do you mind? Not to overstep, but they do need to be negotiated on a case-by-case basis, depending on the dollar amount that's affixed to it. So A, we would need to develop contractual agreements with potential donors who we have naming rights with. And again, any contractual arrangements on this magnitude really do come back to both Jillian and Phil as sort of a vetting process. We do that with our rental agreements for the theater. So they look at those agreements as well. Sunsetting or longevity of those naming opportunities will be included in those. That's something that we as a staff are still sort of sorting out, and then once we know the extent of what we're going to name, the dollar amounts that we've affixed to it, who our target prospects are for those naming opportunities, once we've nailed one down, then we can certainly work with city staff, as we've always done, to ensure that the contractual arrangements and obligations meet the requirements of this board and this council. And in addition to all of these things being voted on by the Alex Theater Committee, you also have an additional layer of checks and balances in terms of our annual audit, which is stipulated in this agreement. If for some reason we fall outside of the boundaries in terms of our use of reserve funds or facility dollars, if we didn't do something that adhered to the contractual obligations with both our lease management agreement as well as our naming agreements, those auditors are going to catch those mistakes, and that's something that would certainly be brought to this council as well.
I mean, but correct me if I'm wrong, this is a five-year lease with a five-year option. You couldn't sell naming rights for fifty years?
You could, although the possessory interest of the, of Glendale Arts in this, in this property is limited to that five-year with a five-year renewal period. And in that, we have the right to accept or reject, as part of the committee, any agreement that they enter into for the naming rights, that will effectively put a limit on what your, will address your concern, that it could be for some other extended period of time. But mind you, the longer the time period, it's probably the more valuable it will be. So it's something that we, get your point, which is very careful to consider how long it's going to be tied up and how much revenue might be potentially generated. That could be shared by the city in some instances, maybe it is desirable, and we'll receive direction from you, to enter into a longer arrangement for particular naming rights. Who's to say, but when it does come forward, we will be bringing it to you for consideration.
I mean, in terms of, when you say consideration, do we have any authority, once we sign this lease, to...
If it's, if it's beyond... If it's, if it's beyond the, the possessory interest right of the Glendale Arts, that would be something that we would bring back, bring, bring back to you, because that is not within the current four corners of the agreements that we have with them. That was, that would be something we would want you to know about and give us direction on.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I mean, that's just one, I mean, the uncertainty, the part that, that is unsettling is just the uncertainty of the amount of funds that could be raised in the naming and the extent that it, it can be in perpetuity or for such a long time.
Well, and if I may, the uncertainty on the other side for Glendale Arts exists as well. We have every belief that we're going to be absolutely successful in all of our fundraising endeavors. That said, if we aren't, based on this lease and management agreement that we are hoping to enter into today, we still take on those obligations. So, the reality is, is that we're, we're all in this risk game together, and while, again, we fully expect that all of our earned income and contributed income streams will pan out, there is still a possibility that on either side, there could be some, some strange feelings with that regard. So, our board is taking the same kind of leap that this council is taking in terms of how we move forward over the next five years. We have a very aggressive plan, we're very confident in our fundraising ability, and we believe that these naming opportunities are the best way that we have to successfully ensure that those capital projects on that list are funded within the next 10 years, and we've built ourselves enough of a foundation in terms of our investments so that we can continue as both Glendale Arts and, and the management entity of the Alex Theater, beyond that first five years and certainly beyond the, the second five years.
I mean, it's just, I don't know why I'm thinking about this. Let's say Turkish Airlines said, "We want to buy naming rights to this stage for $2 million."
Again, I think that that's...
Who would make that decision?
That's something...
Or the Sons of Dixie?
Sure, sure.
Or, you know, you name a group that...
Absolutely.
That has good money, I mean, their money is as green as anyone else's, but may cause some concern on council, but council isn't making that decision, that's you guys.
But, but you have a representative or two on the Alex Theater Committee, and because these go to that committee, they represent the city's interests. Our board certainly is look, not looking to find the most politically correct funder, but we certainly don't want to find a funder that's going to be the opposite of what the Alex Theater is, which is the Center Point, the Community Place, the People's House in Glendale. You have, you have a backup system. You have Phil, you have Ms. Pruitt, you have all of the voting members of the Alex Theater Committee. You also have Phil's voice currently on the executive committee of the Glendale Arts. And so, if there are any concerns on a city level, they're your voice in that respect. And at the end of the day, these lease and management agreements still doesn't make it Glendale Arts' show. We still need to report back to this council, we still need the council's input, and we still need city staff to sign off on certain things. I think some of the opportunities that they may be looking at, they could be undesirable or potentially undesirable funders. We're sensitive to that, just as you are. So, we're a part of this community, I live here, most of my staff lives here, our board lives here. We understand the nuances of Glendale probably better than anyone else, and so, we're not going to pursue prospects that are going to make people feel uncomfortable. Certainly, the Alex Theater is a high-profile venue, and people may come to us with open checkbook. In fact, if anyone's listening now and they want to come to us with an open checkbook, we're certainly able to talk to them. But we also understand that there are certain politically, there are certain groups that may not be politically advantageous for us, and we're not going to cut off our nose despite our face.
Okay. I'm not going to go down this...
From the legal perspective, Mr. Mayor, and as, as a lawyer yourself, just, I would read to you the section on naming rights, which says it's subject to review and approval of the owner, which is the, the city, which approval should not be unreasonably withheld. So, there is an approval right there.
Okay.
Acting reasonably.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's, let's get back to the business at hand. Okay, so, we have, are there any other questions? I'm going to stop talking. There is a, there is an introduction of an ordinance for the city. Would someone like to introduce it at 1A?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, and then at 1B, we have an Economic Development Corporation motion approving the management agreement.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Board members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Herr Pajcik?
Yes.
Tananyan?
Chair Nagerian?
Yes. Thank you. That concludes our business for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn for the council?
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
Council's adjourned, is there a motion to adjourn for the EDC?
So moved.
Second.
Second, EDC is adjourned. And we have closed session now, correct, for council. I will call to order...